Hi, everybody. I am Chris Flucker. I am the opinion editor of Orlando Sentinel. I'd like to welcome you to our interview with the two candidates for Lake County School Board District Two. This is an at-large race, so everybody in the county gets to vote. I have with me today the incumbent Tyler Brandeberg, who was appointed earlier this year by Governor Ron DeSantis to bill a vacancy left by the resignation of Board Member Kristi Burns. And I have a challenger, Jim Miller, who has himself spent considerable amount of time on the school boards. We have two experienced candidates here, and we are looking forward to spending about 30 minutes with them to get to know their positions on the issues they're facing Lake County and schools in Florida, and what their plans are if they are elected. So we will go ahead and get started. The first question that we frequently like to start with is, is what, why do you think you would be, or why have you decided to seek this race? And we'll start with the incumbent, Mr. Brandeberg.
Thank you, everyone, and good afternoon. I'm seeking this race because I truly believe it is one of the most important races in Lake County, one of the important races in the state of Florida right now. School boards are so incredibly important, and the idea of public school is so incredibly important to our communities, both from the ability to raise our children in a community, but also from the economic opportunities that our school district provides and what that means long-term to our students, our community, and everyone else. I was born and raised in Lake County, graduated Lake County Public Schools, and really had every opportunity to be successful while attending Lake County Public Schools. So my goal here with this campaign and serving on this board is to continue the great things that we're doing in Lake County. Excuse me, continue to find ways to improve and increase opportunities for our students to be successful.
All right, Mr. Miller, same question.
All right. Well, I've done this before. From 2010 to 2012, I was a school board member for District One. I'm 73. I've got a lifetime of volunteerism for kids and community service that I have to offer. I've done this for many years. I have a lot of experience. I'm a businessman. I sell commercial real estate. I have a way of building a consensus, because if I don't build consensus, I don't get paid. Everybody has to agree before I can get paid. So I've done some things for the county. I led the comp plan, our comp plan that we did in the early 90s. I was chair of that committee, and we brought some three, everybody thought it was developers against the environmentalists. There's a third party in there, and that was agriculture. And there were three people there, three groups there, and we built consensus all the way through with my committee. And when it went, got to the county commission, it was just a simple vote, because everybody agreed. So if I can do that, I can probably help with the school board when there's contention. I'm looking forward to this. We have an excellent board, an excellent superintendent, a lot better than when I served before. We had some really tough times then. We were broke. This board has us on track financially, and we have a superintendent that leads. And I really want to join that group. There's currently three educators on the board and a business person. I'd like to add my expertise and life experience to that board, and I think it'll be a lot more fun this time than it was last time.
Well, you have brought up something that in my own research for this interview, I can cross myself. There are a lot of people who have expressed satisfaction with the performance of the current superintendent, and I hope I don't mangle her name too badly, Carnegie. That they are very happy with her performance. What priorities should the school board set for her in the next two years? And we'll start with Mr. Miller.
Well, I think we're heading in the right direction. I kind of have a global view, I guess, but in my mind, given the hand they're dealt, the state really does a lot of restrictions on what we can and can't do. And one of the things they do too much of, I think, is testing. And so we have to test, because it has backed off. They've taken away that third-grade test that was causing kids to stress out and whatever, and we're doing progress monitoring now, which is better. But the countries that are leading the top 10 in the world do very little of this testing. The accountability movement that swept the country in 2000. And at that time, we were in the teens in the world, these things. Now we're in the 30s, this is for math, we're in 40s. So the accountability movement isn't really what works for kids. And I'd like us to keep moving the direction we just started moving, getting off the accountability thing. The testing is, you can't teach anybody testing, and testing isn't something you can do to make money passing tests. So it's just one of the things I feel very strongly about, and I think I might be able to bring that to the table, especially with the group we've got there with the three educators.
Mr. Brandeberg.
So if I remember the correction question correctly, it is, what should Superintendent Carnegie be expected to do over the next few years? And yeah, there's a lot of truth in what Mr. Miller had to say. Unfortunately, I don't know how much of that we're going to get done at the superintendent level or how much she can do without continuing to work with the state and see what's going to happen moving forward. But from what my perspective is with Superintendent Carnegie is, I agree, she's done a fantastic job over the last five, six years she's been here. We have dramatically improved our graduation rate from the mid-70s to over 90%. We continue to find ways to work efficiently within our budget. I also have a business background, finance degree from the University of Florida. So the business side is something that I am very keen on, something that I think is really important as Lake County continues to grow and we continue to experience all the growth that is coming to this area, and what that means for our schools, what that means for concurrency and seating capacities, what that means for the quality of the education we can offer. So I think those things are important. Continue to recruit and retain the highest-quality teachers and staff we can. We've made a big push on the human resources side to make sure we are not only abiding by state standards, but also incentivizing teachers and staff to want to live, work, and play in Lake County. The governor's office instituted a minimum wage increase for our teachers, starting pay at $47.5. We upped that to $48,500. We've got some other bonuses and incentives and other structures put in place to continue to raise those salaries for our staffs. Our non-instructional staff is up to $15 an hour. One nice thing that I think is really worth pointing out is that certainly helped a lot, but we've worked with our teachers' union, our service employees' union exceptionally well the last few years. We came to a CBA ratification agreement faster than we ever have in many, many years. So everyone is bringing a seat to the table. Everyone's voices are being heard at this point. We're working really well productively together. So if we can continue on that front, support our teachers, support our students, support our community. Superintendent Carnegie's done a great job, and want to make sure we continue to support her and our communities as we continue to push forward.
Thank you so much. Actually, both of you are doing a great job of segueing into the question I had to up next, which is that the state has put some considerable, has sent resources, but has also put some considerable handcuffs on how school boards pay particularly teachers. Inside that framework, does Lake County have the resources it needs to pay veteran teachers to stay in the classroom? Most of the focus has been on recruiting new teachers. And we'll start with Mr. Brandeberg.
Yes, compression is one of our biggest concerns right now, compression in funding, and compression in salaries, and how we adjust that, because you're absolutely correct. Teacher's starting pay has increased dramatically to levels that have been important, given the current supply and demand constraints in the marketplace and the level of supply of teachers we have available for jobs. So it's certainly been necessary to make sure we get those classrooms filled with quality teachers and our students have that opportunity. But it's also, what does that mean for everyone else in the system? I've heard many, many stories from teachers and staff and other members that have been in Lake County schools for 10, 15 years. They've got master's degrees. They've got experience. They've been highly effective throughout the way. And they're not making much more than a starting teacher. And that is a huge concern, because we are looking at our new teachers to get up to speed, but we're also looking on our veteran teachers to help mentor those, to make sure they're supported in the classroom, help them get up to speed with what's going on. And to make sure there's a considerable amount of difference in pay between the two is going to be important to continue to support the system and make sure people stay incentivized, people want to keep working. Teachers certainly aren't in it for the money. We all know that. But it's a certain, certainly an important factor to what's going on in this whole system. Continue to find ways to take some things off their plate, their discipline, attendance issues. Coming back and re-acclimated to society after COVID and getting back into the classroom has come with a number of challenges that our teachers have had to face head-on and have done a fantastic job doing so. So continue to make sure we're addressing the compression is going to be a huge, huge area of focus moving forward. We are very fortunate in Lake County to have a very quality Chief Financial Officer in Scott Ward. We've got a very transparent budget that's available on our website. We've got the funding at current to take care of these things. We've got a big focus on capital growth moving forward to keep up with demand. But we also know how important it is to invest in our teachers, to have them stay in the long run and make sure they have what they need. So they're certainly not an easy answer. We are aware of what's going on and working every day to make sure we can continue to address compression.
All right, Mr. Miller, same question.
Well, everything that he said, I agree with. And indeed, I think one of the superintendent's strengths are the people that she's brought in to do these things, like Scott Ward and... But, you know, I can't really embellish anything on that. At least I'm not fifth in line of a thing where, you know, everybody else has said the same thing. But anyway, two of us, this is a little easier. But I'd like, since he's already covered all of that, I'd like to bring up that the bus drivers and the school workers, lunchroom workers and all that, they all, they all got raises, but there's compression there, too. Someone who's been there for 20 years is making maybe a dollar more an hour than somebody who just got hired. It just doesn't, isn't right. And that's, that is, you know, we are, because the increase, we've been able to address a lot of that, and it's kept them happier, but we needed, the governor needs to do that again, one more time at least, to get things back to where they need to be. But hopefully that can happen. I think he sees the need, and I think it'll happen.
Thank you very much. I would like to address an issue that is unique to Lake County, which was when I was reviewing a lot of the records of recent meetings, it does seem that there's a lot of collaboration focus and agreement on the board. However, it's notable that Mr. Brandeberg, you joined the board after one member declared that she found the board to be non-functional and could not, said she could not continue in a role that she had just been elected to 18 months prior. What happened there? And I'd like you both to give your assessment of whether that criticism was warranted? And it's so, what, if anything, the board needs to work on internally? We'll start with Mr. Miller.
Well, I know Kristi Burns. She's a neighbor, or was a neighbor. She's moved to California. I was going to run two years ago, and when she was going to move to Europe, and she couldn't move to Europe because of COVID, and she told me she wanted to stay on the board. And that time, she was happy there, and indeed, people I know said she was doing a good job, was a really good board. So I just stepped aside and let her win the seat easily. And she shared with me that she retired. I also helped Molly Cunningham get elected two years ago. And when I went to her investiture, all I could hear from the board was, what a great job. Kristi has done as chair. She happened to have a PhD in biology and chemistry from Georgia Tech, and she happened to be chair of the year that COVID hit. And so her background was invaluable, and all I heard at that meeting was, what a great job she did for that year. I guess things eroded after that. I didn't follow the school board meetings. I heard there were contentious. I don't like watching that kind of stuff, so I never really took the time to watch what went on, but I understand things got pretty ugly. And I guess he felt it was time to move to California. I think it wasn't just that. I think there's some real opportunities for her husband's work and her work. She's a highly-trained scientist, can make it, out there can make a really nice living. So I think it just kind of happened. That's what I know about it. But what I see now, I've been to the meetings. It's very collegial. It gets on great. I know all the board members well. I like them all, even Tyler, but I do hope to replace him.
Well, that's a great intro for you, Mr. Brandeberg.
So I certainly don't want to speak for Dr. Burns, but from my assessment of this and watching meetings and trying to follow what was going on, it wasn't as much divisiveness with the board as much it was divisiveness with certain members of the community. And not to single anybody out by any means, but there were some very contentious meetings in Lake County, like there were in many places in Florida and throughout the country around mask mandates and COVID response and other procedures, where Dr. Burns was consistently an advocate for smart mask mandates, making sure we're doing what we can to keep schools open, to keep students safe. And that was met with a lot of public input on both sides of the aisle, but some pretty nasty public input at some points that was directed at her and some pretty despicable things that should have never been said on the record at a public meeting to anyone, let alone a sitting elected official, were said. And Dr. Burns went through a lot from that standpoint. People are certainly open to their opinions, but there's a time and a place to do things and a way to do things. And there is a way to still disagree from a productive manner, still be able to shake hands and understand we're all playing for the same folks at the end of the day. We all have a very similar goal in mind. It's just we may have different strategies on how to get there. So all that's to say that I think Dr. Burns put up with a lot and a lot that she shouldn't have had to put up with. And I think that was a reason for wanting to move on to the next phase, as well as her own career, her husband's career, the opportunity to move to a new place. I think all that certainly played into it. But I don't think it had anything to do with our, with the board at that point, from what I could see watching meetings and having a relationship with folks, that there were some healthy disagreements, but they all got along well. Dr. Burns brought a different perspective to the board that I think was beneficial in a lot of ways, made sure conversations were had, because the last thing you want is five people if they're all saying the same thing every single day of the week. We're not having conversations. We're not disagreeing. We're not really fleshing out issues to see what works and what doesn't, and making sure we're making the best decision for our students and for our community. I think all that's to say that there was a lot of public input that played in that decision as not as much from disagreements with board members or hostility from that standpoint.
Well, that actually, once again, leads into the next question that I had. One of, among the several hot-button issues that are coming before school board members across Florida right now are several directives that have come down from the state that are being grouped under the title Culture Wars. And they include limits on instructional material that has reached into books that touch on issues of race and gender politics and sexuality. They include discussions of those topics, including questions, questions about whether something called Critical Race Theory is being taught in schools, and if so, should it be specifically banned? And this is a very big question to get to a very specific point. Do you think that this is something that the schools should be spending a lot of time on? And we'll start with Mr. Brandeberg.
I think the short answer is no. I tell people all the time that fortunately or unfortunately, so many decisions of what we can do and what you see play out on the media is set by Tallahassee and the Florida Department of Education. At the end of the day, from my perspective, there's three large, big ideas that school board members participate in right now. One is hiring a superintendent. One is managing a budget, and two, and three is setting policy. Those three things, and there's some overlap in between. But curriculum at this point is all approved by the state of Florida. Yes, we do have some say in which type of curriculum we choose to take on, but all those things are pre-approved, and we can choose between the approved options. Or if you choose to go against those directives, then we see how that's played out, whether that's decreases in funding through the Florida Education Finance Program or other changes that have come into play. So that's not to say that we just don't continue to have conversations, just say that's the way it is and we move on. But we got to keep these things in perspective and really see what we have control over and what we don't at the end of the day, because there are so many different areas we can continue to improve that we do have more control over at the local level. But to answer your question specifically on some of those things, Critical Race Theory is not currently taught in Lake County Public Schools. That is a master's-level course that has come into play in many different places, that has made its way into Florida in some areas, but that is not overrun Lake County schools as of now. We've got a directive from the superintendent, from our board, outlining what our directives are, what we are to teach and what we are not supposed to teach. That's not necessarily to handcuff teachers as much as just let everybody know what the policies are, what the rules are, so we can follow those guidelines and focus on what's important. The idea of personal religious beliefs, personal political beliefs in a classroom, I just think is very dangerous in a matter that we just need to keep in perspective. That's not to say that there's never a time and a place for certain things to come up in conversation, but by and large, curriculum is pretty black and white. We need to make sure we're teaching curriculum and continue to move forward and give our kids opportunities to excel at the next level, but also being mindful of what's going on. So we're going to continue to teach history, the good and the bad in history. We are not going to teach anything beyond that, but it's still a matter of, the material is clear. We are going to teach the material. We are not looking to just continue to take many books out of the library and do other things. Now, we do have a review policy that I think is very impactful, important for parents to be involved and have a say in what's going on. But that's a piece that falls into everything. So if I can say one more thing on that standpoint, Lake County was the first in the area to institute a new program with our library books. So all the books in all of our libraries in Lake County Public Schools are all loaded into our Destiny software system that tracks all the books in there. Parents now have the right to say that my child can check out any book in the library. My child cannot check out any book in the library. My child can check out any book except for these certain titles, or my child can only check out these pre-approved titles. So that way, when a student picks up a book, they take it up to the librarian to check it out. They go to scan it into the system. There's a pop-up that's going to come up that says, hey, the parent says this is good, or the parent says this is not good, and then we will, we will go from there. But the idea of saying that because one parent doesn't like a book means that every other student cannot check out that book is not what we're going to do here. And we're not going to have a banned book section. We're not going to do other things. But we are going to make sure parents have a say in their child's education, and just their child's education, not everybody else's education. So, thank you.
Mr. Miller, same question.
Exactly what he said. He did it very well. I might add that House Bill 1557 had zero impact on Lake County. It just wasn't on our radar screen. A lot of the state issues, there's just some, I don't know. Both sides made a big deal out of it, and it really had, it didn't impact Lake County, anyway. Maybe some other counties, but not this county. And so I just, I have nothing on my website, anything about it, because it did not impact Lake County.
Thank you very much. We are coming to the end of our time, but there is one question that unfailingly makes everybody smile when they are asked to talk about it. And in Lake County, there's a good bit to smile about as well. And that is the rapid growth of career and technical education opportunities that are available to Lake County students and the potential for further opportunities with students having a chance to graduate with associate's degrees, college credit, including higher-level college credit, certificates, and trades that enable them to go directly into the workforce and put college off until a later time. Where is Lake County doing really well, in your opinion, and where are the next steps for this kind of educational opportunity? And let's start with Mr. Miller.
Okay. Lake County's doing extremely well, as is Leesburg High School. I think we're cutting edge as a county. And I'm going to let Tyler, Tyler has it all cold. I've heard him spout us a few times. And I'm going to let him answer the question, because we are doing great things. Diane Carnegie has brought in some, her focus was all of these things. And four years of her, five years, how long has she been there? It's just onward and upward with all those things. Go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yes, this is, and as soon as you said it, Chris, I did put a big smile on my face, because this is one of the shiny examples of what we're doing right in Lake County and what we're going to continue to focus on moving forward. For the longest time, I was just calling this Career and Technical Education expansion, but you hit on as well, it's college readiness and it's career and technical education expansion. So the college readiness part is a little brief, so I'll start with that one first. But that is making sure that our students have every opportunity to be successful at the next level if they choose to go to a college or university. That was a great option for me, but that's not necessarily a great option for everyone. But what we've done in Lake County over the last few years is really diversified our options on college readiness. So we've had advanced placement programs through AP for many, many years. We've expanded the ACE diploma, the Advanced International Certificate of Education in three or four of our high schools, Leesburg High School being the first. We just graduated our first cohort of students last year with an ACE diploma. And then finally, we have started an international baccalaureate program at Taverius High School, the first IB program in Lake County history. So now students have the opportunity through school choice, parents have the right to send their child to any school they want to in Lake County, assuming there's capacity available. So you've got the option in different regions throughout the county for different specialized choices on that college readiness side. But on the career and technical education side, we've got 74 current programs at all of our high schools and our middle schools for students to start to learn a trade, to start to find what their passions might be moving forward, and really get excited about life after high school, life after public school, whether that is college, whether that's a career, whether that's the military. We want our students to have every opportunity to excel. A few that I'd like to mention on the college, or the career and technical education side is the Construction Academy at Leesburg High School. Was reborn about five years ago with a class of about 30 students. This year, we have over 300 students wanting to participate in the Construction Academy at Leesburg High School. We added a second teacher allocation this year to get those kids through. We just broke ground on our fourth Habitat for Humanity House through Leesburg High School. And we also just broke ground on our third Habitat for Humanity House with South Lake High School down in Groveland. So the Construction Academy has been strong. We've started a teaching academy at Taverius High School. As we all know, we still need quality teachers throughout our system. And what better way than to grow your own and have those, the students that are interested in education, get a fresh start in our Lake County Public Schools. Taverius High School has the first one there. We've started some aviation academies. We've started an EMT academy with Lake EMS. We've got so many different programs and always looking to add more. Francis Ellis, Lenea Wiseman, and our team in career and college readiness has done a fantastic job and is always looking for more partners. The only way we get this done is through community involvement and everyone taking a piece and lending some of their talents and resources to help our students excel at the next level. So we're always looking to expand, and any of the options that are open, we're ready to make happen. So that is a very exciting time for us, for sure.
Well, I will tell you that I think Lake County voters who are taking the time to watch this video can be very happy about the great choice that they have to make in this race. And I'd like to give you both a chance to tell us what sets you apart in this race and what message would you like to leave voters with? And we will start with Mr. Miller in this case, because we usually let the incumbent go last. So, Mr. Miller, if you could just tell us this, and then we'll move to Mr. Brandeberg.
All right. Well, my motto, my campaign motto is their future is our future. And the kids are the future of our country. And in my lifetime, I've spent, it's been a passion of mine to help kids succeed and become good citizens. I've been a coach and a mentor, coaching since my kids were little. I still coach youth soccer. I've been mentoring at the high school for 33 years now. So, and I still have a young man there. So I see kids at the elementary level, and I'm in the high schools every week. But anyway, I can't really explain it any better than my resume. It's my website. The only thing I have on my website is my resume. It's a one-page, well, list all the things I've done in the last... I'm 73, so I've got, had a lot of time to get things done. You'll see with all my experience and all that, that's what I bring. I bring experience and wisdom that only age can give you. And on that, I rest my case, but it's at electjimiller.com, electjimiller.com. It's easy to do. All you gotta do is read one page, and you'll vote for me. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brandeberg.
Thank you again for this opportunity today. This has been a wonderful way to get out, meet some more folks that we haven't been able to get to yet. As you know, Lake County is a very, very large place geographically and growing steadily population-wise. So any opportunity we have to be introduced to more people and have conversations, I think we're both interested in. So I want to first start off by thanking you guys for doing this. But no, there's a lot that we've already mentioned. I think the briefest way to sum it up is, as was shared earlier, I was appointed by the governor. I think the, the briefest way to sum it up is, as was shared earlier, I was appointed by the governor in June to fill, they could see it on the board. I've been there for about three months now, hit the ground running. I tell people it's been about three fire hoses worth of information, getting up to speed and understanding all the different nuances, how things work. But within my first six weeks, I'd been to all nine of the schools in my district, starting to form relationships with the principals and the staffs and figuring out what's working and what's not. I think so much of this job is being present in our schools, understanding the day-to-day needs of what's going on and trying to be an advocate to help solve more problems, work with our district, work with our teachers, work with our students and find ways to continue to increase opportunities. Proud lifelong resident of Lake County, graduate of Leesburg High School. So really invested in, in this area and what it means now and what it means moving forward. This is the school system I want to raise my future kids in. This is the school system I want to raise my family in. Continue to show people all the great things that are happening in Lake County. And I think our school system is the best way to continue improving what we're doing and where we're going. I think I was appointed for a number of reasons. I've got a finance background, trying to bring a business perspective to the board and make sure we are managing this budget effectively and maximizing dollars in the classroom. Was elected to serve on the Lake County Water Authority for two years from 2020 to 2022. Served as president of Leesburg Lightning on the Board of Directors for the Leesburg High School Booster Club and Vice Chair of the Board for New Vision for Independence of Lake County. Community involvement is what it's all about. This county has afforded me every opportunity to be successful and I've just really, really enjoyed getting back engaged and getting back involved. There was never any doubt after Edgewood College that I was coming back home. Had opportunities in other places, but nothing beat coming back here and trying to do what I can to make this place better. So that's what this campaign is all about, being engaged, being involved and just trying to do everything we can to make it better. My website is Tylerforlake.com for more information. There's a bunch of local endorsements, strategic priorities, but the most important thing I can do is ask for everyone to please vote in the general election. Please continue to be informed on the two candidates. There's not a bad choice here. Mr. Miller and I have had a great race so far. We knew each other going into this. We continue to remain cordial and just focus on the issues and what's important. So Lake County is in great hands either way, but I would certainly appreciate your support and try to continue the great work we've started. So thank you very much.
Thank you both very much. Just to let people know, once again, this is an at-large race, even though it is a district seat. So everybody gets a chance to vote on November 8th. And I would like to thank both of you for taking the time to come and encourage everybody to take another look and decide who they feel deserves their vote. Thank you very much.